Well, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I want to welcome everybody to the Tuesday, December the 10th, 2024 meeting of the Denton County Commissioners Court. We're so glad we have a full house today with so many of our guests with us today. I'd like to to welcome all of y'all here and those of you who are watching at home or at your office, welcome. We're glad to have you tuning in. At this time, I'd like to wel- I would like to remind everybody to turn off your cell phones. Okay, everybody turn off your cell phones. At this time, I'd like to welcome up Addison Johnson from the Pilot Point 4H Club. And she's going to lead us in our invocation and then our pledges will be led by the the American flag will be led by Gabby Davis. And then a Texas pledge will be led by Hannah Davis. So anyway, y'all go ahead and please drop your cell phones.
Please bow your heads. Dear Lord, thank you for bringing us here together on this beautiful day. Thank you for the commissioners as well as the county employees that make wonderful organizations like 4H happen. Thank you to the hands that prepared the breakfast during this Christmas season. Help us to remember the reason for the season and keep everyone safe as they travel back home today. In Jesus' name, we pray, amen.
Amen. I'll just come right up here. Yep.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Attention, salute, pledge. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state and one God, one indivisible.
Very good. All right. Let's go to item one. Four, we have three now. We have three items, three individuals registered to speak for their public comment forums for items not listed on the agenda. We'll go to our first one, which is Melinda Preston. I would like to remind all of our speakers that we do have a three-minute time limit. Good morning.
Good morning, Judge Eads and commissioners. It's a very fitting day that we're going to be talking about this subject because we have three representatives here who have fought to protect our children from sexually explicit books and pornography. I want to say thank you to all of you who voted for HB 900. Today, we are coming with some information. You asked us to look up, I told you that we were investigating. We have like 26 books that we would like to see pulled out of the libraries that the Commissioners Court is helping to fund, giving finances to. So it's going to go into great detail. I've given you five of the books, I've given you excerpts from the book, how many times things are said, done. There are also some graphic pictures. So I just want to be sure that you are prepared, that whenever you look at it, you will be shocked. But these are the things that our children are seeing. I want to thank you for you guys wanting to protect our kids, being willing to hear and father and also taking a stand for the parents and for the students. So in one of the, in a lot of the books that you're going to see, there is a title called Young Adults. I want you to know that when it says young adults, that's from the age of 12 to 18. It sounds when you hear the word adult, I think of 18. It is a, it is actually from sixth grade to 12th grade. So a lot of them are also in the children's section. Now, one of the books that you're going to see is perfectly normal. That is actually for 10-year-olds and up. You will be appalled. You can go to booklooks.org, I've I've given you all kinds of information on that, booklooks.org, and you can be able to pull up every single book that we are outlining for you, where they are in the library. Rich Wilson has done a fantastic job giving you all the information that you need. But I wanted to thank you. He's going to go give you a little bit more information of all that he did as far as how many, where, and what's going on. So thank you again for all you do. Thank you for taking a stand and for standing with us to protect our children. And thank all of you seriously who have voted for HB 900. We really do appreciate you.
All right, thank you, Melinda. All right, let's go to our next one, which is Rich Wilson.
Morning, Judge.
Good morning.
So in your packet, as Melinda described, we have this four-page spreadsheet basically, which outlines all of the county-funded libraries and what books are in them of these 26, 27 books. And it tells you what section they're in. And as Melinda alluded to, young adult, teen section is ages 12 through 18. And so we've highlighted all of those on here. We're just asking that these books are not left for the children. They need to be in the adult section, not in the teen section. So it's not about getting rid of the book, it's putting it where it belongs. So the book should be in the adult section, moved from the teens. So if you go through the data, libraries are listed across the top, the books on the left side, and then which libraries have them. And every library has at least one of them or two. And some have them in the adult section where they belong, but as you can see, most do not. So we just would really like you to review the data, look at the data, and then consider funding because taxpayer money should not be putting these books in the hands of our children. So appreciate your time, thanks so much.
Thank you, sir.
Next is Mr. Charles Lee.
Yes, good evening, everyone. My name is Charles Lee, I'm from Denton. I will first start off by wishing everybody a Merry Christmas. And I would just like to, I concur with everything that the previous speakers said. And I just want to like to add that I think there, because I kind of, I read the the contract and over the paperwork as far as they established the library program that you have with the county. And I don't think there's anything fundamentally wrong with the program. I think what it is, though, you guys need to create a committee, like a subcommittee, that can monitor these libraries, how's what they're doing with the funds, and have like a complaint process so people can have, file a complaint process, adjudicating which books are appropriate and not appropriate. And that's pretty much all I have to say about that issue. And I also want to say, everybody knows that I'm in full support of President Trump's immigration policies and his agenda. And I don't know if you guys have already done it, but I I believe that everybody, every worker with the county and any contractor with the county should be mandated to enroll in the in the e-Verify program to make sure all these programs, all these workers and these contractors are legally able to work in the United States of America. And after that, I would hope everybody a blessed day. Have a nice day, everyone.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Thank y'all for your time and attention today. Next, let's go to, we have lots of special guests with us today. But I was telling our group earlier at our breakfast that we're going to get the schoolchildren back to to school today. And so we're going to do them first, which is item 3A, Presentation and Interpretation of the Texas AgriLife Extension Department's 2024 Annual Report and Volunteer Hours Check to the County Judge and Commissioners and any appropriate action. So good morning.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. I'm excited to be here today with Denton County AgriLife and our friends and family, our volunteers from throughout the county. Just briefly, I wanted to introduce to everybody our our county agents. We have our county ag and natural resource agent, Zach Davis, our family community health agent, Chani Katari, our Better Living for Texans agent, Dusty Five. I'm Stephen Behringer, our 4H agent. And they're in the process of doing some interviews for our court agents. So hopefully, we will fill our last agent position soon. But we prepared a short video for you today that kind of just highlights and recaps our year for you. And so we're going to play that now.
In 2024, Denton County 4H has grown to 372 members and 82 volunteers across 10 active clubs. Our youth proudly represent the county year-round, competing in livestock shows and showcasing expertise in food and nutrition, STEM, and more. Through partnerships with dedicated volunteers in local schools, we've reached nearly 14,000 students, teaching vital skills in agriculture, horticulture, food preparation, and nutrition. Thanks to the hard work of our members, staff, and volunteers, we're excited to keep making a positive impact and continue living our motto, to make the best better. This year, our Agriculture and Natural Resources Department engaged a diverse audience, including traditional ag producers and first-time landowners. One highlight was the 2024 Small and New Land Owner Conference, which drew 87 attendees. The event featured presentations on working with government agencies, cottage food law, and land trends in North Texas. Additionally, the 2024 Hay Clinic saw a record number of hay samples tested. We also offered multiple CEU-based programs, including feral hog control, our annual CEU recertification event, Wheat Field Day, and quarterly private applicator training, helping citizens safely use pesticides throughout the year. Better Living for Texans, BLT, is a nutrition education program for adults and children eligible for SNAP. It equips individuals and families with skills to make healthier choices and maximize resources. The Walk and Talk Program, held at Flower Mound and Pilot Point Libraries, graduated 38 participants, promoting physical activity and healthier eating. The Learn, Grow, Eat, and Go Program, in partnership with Lake Dallas and Wayne Stewart Ryan Elementary, impacted 38 students, teaching gardening skills. The Growing and Nourishing Healthy Communities Garden Course, in partnership with Emily Fowler and Little Elm Library, graduated 55 participants on essential gardening techniques. In 2024, Denton County's Family and Community Health Unit welcomed three new master wellness volunteers. Six active volunteers logged 110 hours, reaching 375 residents with 34 nutrition education programs valued at $3,684. Walk Across Texas, launched in partnership with Denton County HR, saw 192 employees walking 30,417 miles in eight weeks. Three A Matter of Balance series were held for 30 seniors at Thrive Flower Mound Senior Center, focusing on fall prevention and improving strength, balance, and flexibility. Two home food preservation workshops focused on water bath canning educated 16 participants. Plans include expanding workshops to include pressure canning. In 2024, the Denton County Master Gardener and Master Naturalist Programs provided a combined total of over 59,000 volunteer hours, with Master Gardeners contributing more than 31,000 hours and Master Naturalists over 28,000. Together, they reached 19,866 residents, including 6,880 contacts by Master Gardeners and 12,986 by Master Naturalists. Recruitment of new volunteers is vital to both organizations. Each year, citizens are put through a substantial vetting process and go through 12 weeks of intern training. Annually, almost 80 interns for both groups become master volunteers and work to serve the public through volunteer service. Thank you to all of our volunteers throughout the year for all of their hard work and support. We would also like to thank our Denton County Commissioners Court for their continued support of Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension. In 2024, Denton County 4H has grown to 372 members and 82 volunteers across 10 active clubs. Our youth proudly represent the county year-round, competing in livestock shows and showcasing expertise in food and nutrition, STEM, and more. Through partnerships with dedicated volunteers in local schools, we've reached nearly 14,000 students, teaching vital skills in agri-
Watch it twice.
Yeah, we can watch it again. Well, good morning, Judge Eads and Commissioner.
Hello, Tommy.
It's a great opportunity to be with you today. We appreciate this opportunity to be here. It's always an honor and privilege to get to be with you, share this opportunity about agri-life. And as president of the Leadership Advisory Board, I would like to present a check today to the judge and the commissioners that symbolizes volunteer service that we talked about, saw in this video, contributed to the county by the AgriLife Extension Volunteers. As you know, Denton County has more than 1 million residents, and this number continues to grow. As an office of only nine individuals, it is impossible for the AgriLife staff to reach each Denton County resident through educational programs. This is where the work of AgriLife volunteers comes into play. AgriLife Extension Programs rely upon help from trained volunteers to not only provide programs and outreach to Denton County residents, but also to help agents identify the educational needs of our communities. In 2024, those volunteer groups in Denton County who contributed hours include Master Gardeners, Master Naturalists, Master Wellness Volunteers, the Denton County Ag Committee, the Family and Community Health Committee, 4H leaders, the Leadership Advisory Board, and other program area committees. The total number of reported hours was 76,707, which when multiplied by the independent sector value of volunteer time at $33.49 an hour is a value of $2,568, $917.43 given back to Denton County. And I would like to take this opportunity on behalf of the Leadership Advisory Board to thank the agents and their assistants for all the work that they provide for us to help us out there in the community. They give a lot of their extra time, they're out there in the evenings doing these programs, they're out there on the weekends. So I want to thank the the agents and their assistants. So we thank you for your continued support of AgriLife Extension in Denton County. I would like to present you with this check today.
Perfect, good, well, thank you. Well, before you do, I want to say on behalf of the court, kind of echo a little bit what we said in the other room here, the breakfast, which was great. Yeah, they did a great breakfast, like they always do for us. It's a great time for us to get together, reflect on the year. And wasn't that an impressive video with all the things that they do? It makes me tired seeing all the great things that they do. But they're young and excited and doing great things. There are so many different components of AgriLife, as we were discussing earlier this morning. And I want to, I want to thank all that, all that they do, molding, especially our, working with our 4H kids and molding the next generation, teaching families how to do healthy meal planning and just there's a variety. The Master Naturalists, our Master Gardeners, and all the different groups that that work. And I, I would just like to repeat what I said earlier, this is a great partnership. We believe in partnerships in government and the efficiencies and the relationships that are made in in partnerships. And this is a great partnership between the state of Texas and the counties, the 254 counties that are in Texas. And so Denton County has a great relationship with our AgriLife, which is based in Texas A&amp;M.
We want to thank the farmers that provided that food for us this morning.
That's right, absolutely, absolutely.
I would not be here today if it wasn't for 4H Denton County, because I was in 4H Denton County. Edna Trigg was not the county agent when I was in there though.
Yes, that's right, that's right. Well, it really is, the agriculture industry is alive and well in Denton County, even though we're growing by 90 people a day and people are moving here. Agri, AgriLife is still an essential industry here in the county. It's a vibrant industry here in the county. And it, and, and also, I love how AgriLife is also working in residential homes and subdivisions and how to do new innovative ways to produce your own food and and limit pesticide use and you like, and encouraging pollinators and so forth. There's just lots of different, lots of different avenues of AgriLife. And I would encourage anyone who's interested to get online and learn more about it. And we have a great team of volunteers and staff who would love to welcome you into the great courses and curriculum and volunteer opportunities that you can have at AgriLife. Anyone else want to add anything this morning? All right, well, Tommy, we'll go down there and, and I don't think we have any action items per se, but let's take a photograph. Thank you, let's give AgriLife a big.
You and all our volunteers, right, Judge?
Yeah, no, they give them to us. They give it to you. So they give it to you, you take over. Yeah, so you're in charge of making it last through the whole Christmas. No, just put it with you. Or you can put it next to me. Doesn't matter. Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, that's, that's, that's fine. Okay.
I don't have, I'm not that kid.
Steak wraps.
That'll clear out half the courtroom.
I'll just leave it up there. No, yeah. The re- the view got better. All right, next I'd like to go ahead and let's do, let's go to item three D. Three D is approval of a proclamation recognizing Senator Drew Springer for his years of service to the Texas Legislature in any appropriate action. Where is Senator Springer? Yeah, there you are, sir. Please come forward here. Good morning, good morning. You got your UNT green on, of course.
That's right.
It wouldn't be the same without that.
Even got the socks.
Well, Drew, we'd love to, oh, I love it. We'll read this proclamation, the members will make some comments, and then we'll, we promise we'll let you hear the last word. Does that sound good? So this is a, pardon me. This is a proclamation honoring Texas State Senator Drew Springer. It is with great admiration and respect that the Denton County Commissioners honors Texas State Senator Drew Springer for his outstanding dedication in service to the state of Texas and to the residents of Denton County. Whereas Senator Drew Springer began his public service career in two thousand thirteen when he was first elected to the Texas House of Representatives, where he served with distinction, advocating for his constituents and working on behalf of the people of Texas. Whereas in two thousand twenty, Senator Springer was elected to the Texas Senate, where he has continued his exemplary service representing Senate District Thirty with integrity and commitment. Whereas during his tenure in the Texas Legislature, Senator Springer has been a strong advocate for key issues affecting Denton County, including local governance, economic development, education, and workforce development, infrastructure, and public safety. Whereas Senator Springer's leadership and collaborative spirit have been invaluable in advancing policies to promote economic growth and tourism in Denton County by sponsoring legislation in two thousand twenty-three that created a funding mechanism for the future exposition center here in Denton County. Whereas Senator Springer's legacy of public service is a testament to his unwavering dedication to making a positive impact on the lives of all Texans, particularly those in Denton County. And now therefore be resolved that the Denton County Commissioners Court on behalf of the citizens of Denton County hereby extends its deepest gratitude to State Senator Drew Springer for his many years of exemplary service to the Texas Legislature and for his tireless work in advancing the needs and aspirations of the people of Denton County and beyond. Be it further resolved that the Denton County Commissioners Court wishes Senator Springer continued success in all his future endeavors and thanks him for his selfless dedications to our state of Texas, done in open court this tenth day of December twenty twenty-four upon a motion made by Commissioner Edmondson, Chair will second. Any discussion? Who wants to go first? Commissioner Edmondson? There, push it and just hold it real tight. There we go.
Senator, congratulations for, for your retirement. I guess you're going to sail away into the sunset. Sailing is one of his favorite sports. That's why I said that. Uh, we do appreciate what you've done, uh, many, many things, and we appreciate your always being open to listening to Denton County residents and what we're interested in. So, thank you. We're, we're very glad that, uh, you're going to have a happy retirement with your wonderful family, and you know you're welcome back at this court anytime.
Thank you. Anyway, Bobby, who, 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 anyone else want to speak? Okay, go ahead.
Senator, I just want to thank you for the job that you've done here in Denton County, all the help that you've done for the Commissioners Court, the citizens of Denton County. I appreciate you and I wish you a happy retirement. Hate to see you go, but I know there's other things that you want to do, and I just want to thank you for your service always. And please let it be known that you are welcome here in Denton County in this Commissioners Court at any time and in our neighborhoods. Thank you. Be blessed.
Kevin?
Yes. Senator, I echo those comments. Thank you so much. You've, you've governed in just such a, a, um, powerful way, and we just appreciate so much what you've done. I appreciate all the conversations I get to have with you, and, um, I'll still have to call you just to have some of those conversations. But thanks so much for what you've done.
I appreciate the relationship that, uh, we, we have. Not everybody is always access- is accessible, and you were always easy to pick up the phone and talk to. I want to thank your staff as well. Your staff was always very accommodating as well, open to having discussions and would help communicate when you were busy, uh, down in Austin. Uh, and obviously want to thank your, your wife and family for allowing you to, to represent, uh, this area for the years that you had. They, they are, they, they give up more than people understand, the families do. Um, but, uh, obviously you're still a young man, so you've got other things to do that you're going to enjoy, and I can appreciate that. And I, all I can do is wish you the absolute best. And again, I, I really enjoyed, uh, getting to know you in, in the relationship in the short period of time I've been in my position that we've been able to have. So, thank you again.
Senator, I think this proclamation says so much because it talks about the, your belief in the, the good that government can do and the partnerships that, that it is built on. And I want to just thank you for being a great friend of mine, and a personal friend of mine over the years, and a friend of Denton County. And you understood the role that government can play in a limited framework, right? In a conservative mindset and, and promoting, um, tourism. You know, I, I appreciate, I want to just thank you on behalf of all the people who'll be using our exposition center in the future. I mean, I didn't, Denton County raised it now, but because of the people in this room, Lynn, Cronda, and others who, the court, our staff, your staff, who worked on that significant milestone that, that our AgriLife kids who all just left the room, they'll have a place to go. I was thinking about that. It's a great morning today. Those kids are going to have a great place to show livestock and, and be, do other, uh, our Master Gardeners and Naturalists, all the different people who'll be utilizing that facility out there. Because people in this room, a few years ago, had a vision and worked together, worked together to pull that off. And so that's just one of the many things that you've worked on to, to make Denton County a better place. But I think it's notable, especially today to mention that. So I just want to, I want to echo the comments about family. Thank you for all these years in the legislature. You know, it's really an unpaid position virtually, you know, uh, virtually. And thank you for the sacrifice and all the hours up and down, uh, I-35 and all that you've done. Uh, uh, and you, you didn't live in this county, but you, we didn't know any different because you treated it and loved on it just like it would, like it was your home county. I know you had, like, how many counties did you represent in that Senate district?
I had fourteen in the Senate district, and then, uh, I had twenty-two in the House, so I've had thirteen counties overall.
So, so that's a lot to say grace over, as my mother would say. So I want to, I just want to thank you, always being there, always being present, willing to help out, and, uh, opening up your office for late-night visits during the legislature when we were down there, waiting for bills to come forward. So just thank you for, for everything, Drew. I really appreciate it. And we'll give you the floor.
Thank you, Judge and Commissioners, uh, you know, it's, it, reflecting back, uh, we did do an awful lot of great things. And y'all have always treated me as though I was even one of your state representatives. I think I was an honorary member of the delegation of, uh, Denton County in my time in the House. And, you know, uh, living here in eighty-five through eighty-eight when I was at UNT, um, obviously put Denton County in my heart. And, you know, we love, uh, the rural part of Cook County, but, uh, there's a lot of things that we come to Denton to, to do and enjoy and, uh, hoping to be a part of that and looking forward to the Expo Center as well. Um, you know, I know we have, uh, another party in this, uh, Denton delegation that, uh, unfortunately probably couldn't be with us today because of his, uh, family's loss and Dr. Burgess losing his daughter. So I do want to take a moment and say, you know, that he, uh, and his entire families and our thoughts and prayers, um, on that. Um, but it, you know, it, it's, you, you have the opportunity to work to better our communities, to better the, the vision, and it's really not for us. It's for those future generations. It's those kids that we, you talked about. You know, that's why we, we did it. I did it for my kids and my grandkids. I knew if I made it perfect for anybody, um, that was in that age group, I was doing the right thing. And so always try to keep that in mind, uh, as we go forward. And, you know, maybe just about out, uh, out here in about thirty-five days, but, uh, you know, you and I even had a conversation in the last week talking about something that, uh, may take a few years that we'll work on together to advance Denton County and the city of Denton to make it a better place, yet still, uh, using those connections and those opportunities and that vision, uh, to create that, uh, you know, even a better Texas. You know, it's hard to believe because we know we're the best place to live in the, the entire world, but yet we can still work to make it better. And so, uh, I appreciate, uh, y'all's information because without that collaborative back and forth and understanding, you know, we don't create good laws, good regulations, good, good places. You know, it's, it's, it's that working together that sort of makes it come to something that really benefits all of our constituents, the million-plus people now in Denton County. It's a, it's a, it's amazing, uh, to think about in those regards. And so, um, again, uh, I look forward to working with Brent Hugaboo, my replacement. Uh, he's been open to me, and I hope I've, have made it very clear he needs to be open to everybody, um, and y'all especially. Uh, it is sort of fun being on this side of the dice. Knowing that I won't be back up there for, uh, again, but, uh, I'm going to enjoy it. Lydia and I are, uh, going to look into doing an awful lot of traveling and kayaking, but do a lot of family work as well with my father and probably end up going down, seeing a few friends down the legislature during this session. Um, I, although I'm really glad I'm not back in the house. It seems like a wild place to be right now, so.
Tough spot.
But, uh, again, thank y'all so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Senator. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir.
All right, hold.
All right, Karen, Deion, this does, you know, i- i- is the judge said his comments, you know, really, you know, I can't be every place and every time. Clearly don't have all the greatest stuff he is, but Deion, Karen, is a valuable part of my team. They, maybe his success, they should be a part of it.
Okay, let's go to item three F. Three F is approval of a proclamation recognizing Representative Dr. Lynn Stuckey. Dr. Stuckey, if you'll come forward for his years of service to the Texas House of Representatives. Good morning, good morning. Good to see you, sir.
Good to see you. Thank you.
We got a, this is a proclamation honoring Representative Lynn Stuckey. And whereas Denton County Commissioners Court takes great pride in recognizing the exceptional service and unwavering dedication of Representative Lynn Stuckey, who has faithfully represented the people of District Sixty-four of the Texas House of Representatives since his election in two thousand sixteen. Whereas prior to his legislative service, Dr. Lynn Stuckey demonstrated a deep commitment to education and public service through his fifteen years of service on the Sanger Independent School Board of Trustees, including four terms as board president, where he played a pivotal role in advancing educational opportunities for the students and families of Sanger. And whereas Representative Stuckey has been a tireless advocate for the growth and development of Denton County, and in the most recent legislative session, he authored the legislation creating the funding mechanism for the future Denton County Exposition Center, a significant project that would promote economic growth and tourism in Denton County. And whereas Representative Stuckey has also demonstrated a strong commitment to public safety and is Vice Chair of the County Affairs Committee, he passed important legislation that serves as a recruitment tool for sheriffs, helping to address staffing shortages and ensure that law enforcement agencies have the resources they need to protect and serve Texas communities. And whereas Representative's leadership and dedication to public service reflect his deep commitment to improving the lives of his constituents, strengthening the community, and fostering a prosperous future for all Texans. And now therefore be resolved that Denton County Commissioners Court on behalf of the citizens of Denton County extends its deepest appreciation and gratitude to Representative Lynn Stuckey for his years of outstanding service in the Texas House of Representatives. Be it further resolved that the Denton County Commissioners Court wishes Representative Stuckey continued success in all his future endeavors and thanks him for his continued commitment to the people of Denton County and the state of Texas, done in open court this tenth day of December twenty twenty-four upon a, a motion made by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Who wants to go first this time, anyone? Diane?
Hi, Lynn.
Hi, Diane. The Honorable Commissioner.
The Honorable Representative, sorry. When we first met, which was back in the Leadership Denton class in nineteen eighty-eight, I remember thinking, oh, I like this guy, and you became our veterinarian. I didn't know that you were going to also become our state representative at that time. But I think that just shows what Leadership Denton graduates can do. We've been blessed to have someone with your personal integrity and your professional knowledge represent us in the state legislature. There's so many, we always knew as a group, if we needed something done, we could go to Lynn Stuckey and he would help us. Uh, you were the most senior member of our delegation, and so we appreciate everything you've done all these years. And I don't think you're done. I think you still have a community spirit in your heart and a servant's heart to serve. So we'll look forward to seeing what you and the good Lord have in mind next.
Thank you, Commissioner. Diane, personal friend.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Dr. Stuckey, Lynn.
Yes, yes, my personal friend, Bobby.
I want to thank you for your service. As Diane said, anytime that you needed something, you could pick up the phone and you were there for us. I appreciate your integrity, also your professionalism throughout this, these, uh, I appreciate your integrity, also your professionalism throughout this, these several elections. I thank you for all that you have done for Denton County. And I thank you for the fact that you're leaving Denton County better than it was when you got here. As the judge said, you worked tirelessly with us on that exposition center. And I wanna just thank you, and I wanna thank Laurie, she's here today, the family. Because we know that we do need family around us when everyone else is maybe kicking us. We still have, if we don't make them mad, then they're still here to help us. Thank you for all that you're doing. As Diane said, don't just go home in trouble. Go and have a good time everywhere you can. Your knowledge is still needed here in Denton County. And so please share that knowledge with someone else. Sometimes we go home and we keep that knowledge, we need to share our knowledge. We all learn something on the jobs that we do. Please make sure that we share that with someone else. Someone needs you. We don't know that they need us until they call us, but be ready to answer the call. Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby. Yeah, and I wanna add to that about Laurie. I mean, I won't give all the glory to God, but second of all, my wife has been unbelievable. Also having an open heart surgery and then having to have a second heart surgery recently because of cancer in college damaging her heart valves. And she's absolutely amazing that she could help and she's doing so, so well. So thankful to all of you, but thankful to God for the blessings that I have and will continue to have.
That's right.
I'm gonna applaud to that, yes, absolutely.
Dr. Stuckey, you know, thank you so much. And yes, let's give the praise to God and, and thank you Laurie for everything you've done. But, but, you know, I just appreciate your forthright leadership that you've brought to the position. And I've always respected how you did your governing. And you've done a great job for us and we thank you for that so much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Dr. Stuckey, the first time we met, I had no idea, obviously, anything about the political world. In two thousand seventeen, I had a heifer that was in trouble and so.
I don't think that's ever been said in this court.
Probably not, but.
He's referring to, to a bovine there, sir.
Like you said, my wife's wonderful as well, all she's been is supportive. But no, this was, you know, I quickly realized the type of person you were because most vets would have said, look, it's, you know, we go ahead and put the animal down. But you listened to us and we're animal lovers, so we did everything we could for this, this heifer. And took, gave it way longer than probably necessary, spent every bit of money we could. You did everything you could to help us out. But the point to that is, is, is obviously you, your love for animals, your love for people and, and your dedication to your job and your customer. And so that, that's greatly appreciated because not everybody's that way. And I think that it was a testament. And then, of course, then a few years later, I get into politics and then I realize that's what you did as well, which I really appreciate and thank because, you know, trying to do a full-time job and doing that as well, it's a lot of work and it takes a lot from the family, which again, thank you and your family as well for those sacrifices they give. But as of recent, one of the main things that was really important to me and to this county that was the Expo Center, and you were very supportive in that, and I really appreciate that, to helping us get that across the line. And so you've, you've left, you've left an impression for, for this county and that's something that'll be huge for the future. And, and again, I really appreciate it and it was, it's wonderful what you do for the animal world as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Well, what a, well, Dr. Stuckey, it's, it's bittersweet that we are honoring you today because you've been such a partner to the county. And you know, when you think about the title representative, they're representing us from back home down in Austin. And I think Lynn, that you had a keen understanding of what that meant, to be a representative. And all these years in office, you made a point to pick up the phone and call me and others on this court and say, what is good for Denton County? Different bills were coming through, especially when you were on that County Affairs Committee. And the industry, different industries are lobbying and want different measures that are taken for different counties across the state of Texas. And Lynn called us late o'clock, late at night. Andy, what is, what is the county's viewpoint on this? And sometimes I knew instinctively what was gonna be good or bad. Sometimes I needed a tag up, I called Jody or the fire marshal or other folks. I'll get you an answer in the morning, get you something overnight on a technical detail, on something. And how to make things better, maybe not kill the bill, but how do we modify and make it better? Where it's a win-win for everybody. And I think that you had, you understood that, and had that spirit of win-win about you. But, but I never had to doubt that you were working on the, on the side of the county and the residents here, never. I never had to worry about that, you know? And, and if you had a question, you, you wouldn't mind picking up the phone and calling and saying, what is this, what's impact here? So I really appreciate that. I, I had a comfort level about that. And I obviously wanna thank you for carrying the Expo Bill in the House. We worked on to the session before and fell short. And, you know, we all said, you know what, there's always next time. And so, and that's exactly what we did.
That's right, and you had a full head of hair when we started.
I did, I did, and it's gone. So absolutely, but I, I will tell you, yes, through that process actually especially. But you know what, we, we, we kept the faith and worked hard on that late night, early mornings, working it. And, and I know it's gonna be a great success and it wouldn't be there without that legislative act. And you carrying that in the House was just critical, you know? And so I think that's one of your lasting legacies, not what we see today, but that we'll see in the future, which is really great about your public service career. And I wanna thank you again, I wanna thank Laurie and your kids for sharing you with the, the people of the state of Texas, not just Denton County, but the state of Texas all the years. So thank you so much. I wanna thank your, your wonderful team for all their efforts, all these years. They always made me proud, just a phone call away as well. So thank you, Dr. Stuckey, and I'll hand you the floor.
Again, I wanna thank all of you. I think you said in that room over there that we were on a train headed in the same direction, in the right direction. And that direction is for our future, not only us, but our kids and our grandkids. Which, by the way, our grandbaby Bo is two today on December the tenth. So we will be having another second birthday party later this evening. But, you know, again, I, I thank God for the opportunity to be here in, in Denton County. Came in nineteen eighty-three when we had about a hundred and forty thousand people in the whole county. And now, as Senator Springer said, well over a million. And we watched the growth and we wanted good growth for not only us, but our kids and our grandkids. And we're continually working on that and fighting for that. But we do it in a way that is respectful to people that we agree with and the ones that we don't agree with. And as a Christian, it's to be also a light for Christ. But I too want to again say thank you so much, Laurie, for all you've done to be at my side when it's, it's very difficult. There's weeks you're spending seven or eight hours driving. You're getting pounded on all week and you come home and you've gotta actually make a living because that, that job did not pay your light bill. But I have the greatest staff in the world, Lyle Drescher, thank you so much. He had so much talent and as a former city manager for, I'd say he's a rehabilitated forty-plus year city manager when he came to work for us. And Tanya Morris, what a great job she's done. And then we've had a number of volunteers. We've had a number of interns from the University of North Texas, T W. They are all very supportive. And again, we're friends, we're family, we're all gonna be here together, not only now, but in the future because we're all, everybody that I know that I'm working with. And not only you said you, that I called you at night, Judge, but you and every commissioner that I called at night answered the phone. Okay, I'm a representative, I may be an expert in veterinary medicine, but not a lot of other things. And so I wanna know the good, the bad and the ugly before I start taking a vote. And it was so important because that affects our kids in so many ways. And that bill we passed for the Expo Center will not cost our taxpayers one dime. But it's gonna bring so many people here and those children that were here earlier that are learning so many opportunities in the future. So, you know, God bless us for that and God bless our great state, God bless our children. And the, the many, many things that we have, that we work together, we don't sit there and butt heads as our forefathers wanted us to, they want us to debate and stand up for what's right. And we, you all have done that and I have done that. And also I wanna thank Senator Springer and Commissioner, Representative Timish for doing the same thing because we work together, both in the same house and across the rotunda in the senate, and that's how you get things done. So thank you again, God bless y'all.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the motion carries unanimously. No, I wasn't allowed. All right, next, Cronda, if you'll come down. Item three E, which is approval of a proclamation recognizing Representative Cronda Timish for her years of service in the Texas House of Representatives and the appropriation. Good morning. Good to see ya. So we have, this is a proclamation honoring Representative Cronda Timish. And whereas Denton County Commissioners Court takes great pride in recognizing the exceptional service and unwavering commitment of Representative Cronda Timish, who has faithfully represented the people of the District sixty-five in the Texas House of Representatives. Whereas Representative Timish's dedication to public service began long before her election to the Texas House, having served on the Louisville Independent School District, School Board, where she worked to advocate for students, teachers and the community, demonstrating her commitment to education and the well-being of Texas families. And whereas Representative Timish has been a strong leader in the fight against the fentanyl crisis, authoring and supporting critical legislation aimed at reducing the supply of illegal fentanyl and providing necessary resources for law enforcement and public health officials to combat this growing epidemic. In addition to her work on the fentanyl crisis, Representative Timish has also been a vocal advocate for policies to combat human trafficking, tirelessly working to strengthen the laws to protect vulnerable individuals and ensure that cities have the tools needed in the fight against this devastating issue. And whereas Representative Timish's legislative efforts reflect her deep commitment to protecting the safety, well-being and prosperity of all Texans. And her led, and her leadership continues to make a positive impact in communities across the state. And now therefore be it resolved that Denton County Commissioners Court, on behalf of the citizens of Denton County, extends its deep appreciation and gratitude to Representative Cronda Timish for her dedicated service to the Texas House of Representatives and her dedicated efforts to promote the well-being of all Texans. And be it further resolved that the Denton County Commissioners Court wishes Representative Timish continued success in all her future endeavors and thanks her for her continued commitment to the people of Denton County and the state of Texas done in open court this the tenth day of December twenty twenty-four upon a motion by Commissioner Falconer. Oh, that's a tie. I'm gonna give it to Commissioner Mitchell. Who wants to go first? Kevin, do you wanna go first?
I'll, I'll be happy to. Cronda, Representative Timish. Thank you so much for, for, for your service to us and the state. But I just wanna thank you so much more for being my friend. Such a great friend, we've known each other for so long and, and a sister in Christ. And you've given me so much wisdom and so much advice. And I just appreciate that. I know that that doesn't stop. I know that we will continue that relationship. But we do appreciate what you've done for us here in the county and what you'll continue to do. God has great plans for you and just thank you so much, yeah.
Who wants to go next?
Okay, what can I say? Representative Timish, Cronda, my partner in all that we do and all that you do for Denton County. In twenty twenty, I wasn't on, nineteen twenty nineteen, I wasn't on Facebook and none of that. And Cronda said you need to be. And she patiently taught me. And I called her for a year saying, how do I do this and how do I do that? Oh, Cronda, I'm locked down, I can't do this. I wanna thank you for your friendship, for all that you've done, not only helping me, but you've helped all around this district on the school board. You are a star member of that school board. I wanna thank you for serving the kids some L I S D. I wanna thank you for the business you have, Green Meadows, providing service, landscape service and flowers and pretty flowers, and I got some of those flowers that I won. I wanna thank you, Cronda, because when you lost that first election, you never quit. You kept going on. Sometimes when we get discouraged, we quit. You never quit, you just kept going. I wanna thank you for your integrity, your professionalism, all that you do all over this county. I wanna thank you when I needed somebody to serve on the CPS board, you stepped up to the plate. I'm a fellow member with you on the Lunch for a Leader at Mill Street Elementary. We were at Hedrick and now we're at Mill Street Elementary. I wanna thank you, not only that you, we met with our students, but you followed your student, made sure she did what she needed to do. I wanna thank you for all your service. You've been a great asset to Denton County. I wanna tell you to keep up the good work and I have some more jobs for you to do. Because I don't believe you're ready to quit. And so, believe it or not, I've got something else for you to do. And I know you'll be willing to do that. So thank you for all that you do. You've left this place a better place than it was when you got here. I thank Jeff and the kids and all the time, your daddy, that worked the polls, that had to give up time with you. We worked the polls in the cold together. You pushed me. And I wanna thank you for making sure that I did what I needed to do to get the job done, as well as you getting the job done. Thank you for many, many walks and saying, talking to the neighbors and me saying, I haven't done this. And Bobby, you gotta do it. And all the time that you walked, I think you walked more than anyone of our representatives or elected officials walking, knocking on doors because you wanted to let the citizens know that you were here for them. All they needed to do was call you. Thank you. Thank you, Bobby.
Cronda, I'm so glad to learn that you are an expert on Facebook and all that. You will be hearing from me. I wish I'd done that earlier, Bobby. I remember the very first time we met, Cronda, and it was at a Louisville area Republican Club. And I apologize, I had to ask your name twice because it was a very unusual name. And I thought at the time, this is a pretty strong woman. And I, I appreciate the fact that you were very happy to introduce yourself twice to me. Then I learned about all the things that you do for your community. And so when you decided to run for that representative seat, I thought, she's the girl for this job, no question about it. What Bobby said about walking, I've never seen anybody walk so much. I remember you've called me a couple of times when you were out in Precinct Four and you had found some remote person that you thought I should go get a sign to, and so I did. You already had one there, of course. It's just amazing what you have done. And I also have to tell you that when you took up the case for Mr. Robertson, I was so proud of you. I don't know if your standard is correct or not, but you're, you're. I don't know if your stand is correct or not, but your, your heart said it was. So I was very proud of you for standing virtually alone sometimes to try to get a new trial for that man. I don't know how that's gonna turn out, but Cronda, you don't care how it turns out, you just did what you knew was right. You're the most dependable and honest person that I think I've ever met in political life. So thank you for all that. And like Bobby said, you don't quit. So I expect to see you back doing some more stuff for us. I don't have any particular jobs for you right now, but other than Facebook, but we'll find some. You'll be hearing from us. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. You know, I obviously haven't been in this position long, so again, it goes back. I don't have near the long-term relationship most of these folks have had with you. But the short years we have been, that I've known you, you have such a bright personality. That's what I remember right off the bat, you know, always engaging, you know, just happy-go-lucky, talk with anybody, which is, is very appealing, right? And especially in these kind of roles that you took on. It's a very important role to have that ability because it makes you approachable. And then, you know, for you to fight for something that's dear to me as well as, is the drug and human trafficking. And that's something that, you know, I really appreciate all the support and effort and energy you put into that. It's a, it's a huge issue that we have in America and even in our state. And most people have no idea how bad it is in Ditten County. But I really appreciate the, the effort that you put forth there. Obviously, you're not finished being involved in the political arena. And so I look forward to seeing you more. Thank you, ma'am.
I'll tell you, I'll tell you a story that I think speaks so, exemplifies my relationship with Cronda. So she was running for the school board. She called me as a county commissioner. She called me and said, I'd like to talk to you about this school board race. And I said, okay. And I said, well, I'm not gonna, I'll tell you from the beginning, and I know you're busy and you may not have time for this, but I'm not, I'm not gonna give you campaign advice, have a political conversation, I'm staying out of y'all's, y'all's race. Between my friends, I'm gonna stay out of it. But I will be happy to speak to you as an LISD parent. Not a campaign conversation, but just about the school district. And she said, I'd welcome that. So we sat down and I went through all things that I thought the school district did great, ways they could improve. As a parent of three kids in a district, went through this whole thing. She took all these detailed notes, goes back, wins the election. And about three months later, she called me and said, I've been on the school board. I want to give, I want to do a follow-up with you on all the eight or 10 items that you had of concern. That says a lot right there. She didn't win the election and go off and, you know, start conquering the world. She actually went, remembered, she wrote down detailed notes of what I had concerns about. And she did myth busting with me and all that kind of great stuff, which was wonderful. But did that follow-up and that casework. And that's part of what being in office is about, is hearing the concerns, doing your research, looking into it, calling, calling it like you see it, and then doing that follow-up. And Cronda, that's exactly, you did it as a school board member, you did it as a state rep. And I know you'll do anything you, you set your hand to. So that it wasn't about just winning an election. It was actually about doing the, the work, what it's, what is called upon and whatever level you, you represent. Whether it's a school board or the state. And so I just want to, I want to thank you for that. You obviously have a great work ethic. You, it was unbelievable, your work ethic as a, as a candidate and as an official. And I just want to thank you for that. Great work on the school board. Thank you for working on our CPS board here at the county and so many other things. You were everywhere. And you know, those of us who are in this business, you know, every time you go out and make a public appearance, you get homework, which is great. But somebody's gonna say, oh, Bobby, I'm so glad to see you. I need you to follow up on this right here. And I cannot imagine all the casework that you generated because you're, you're constantly out and about. And I know you and your team had a great care and concern, all the way back when you ran for school board, all the way through. Want to thank you for your support of the Expo Center as well. Thank you for, for being an early supporter of that too. And it's just, it's really great. But I know that we're not seeing the last of you. And, and I just wish you God's blessings on anything that you set your hand to. I know you're gonna, you're gonna cover it with care and concern. And I'll echo what I said about Drew and Lynn. I never had to worry about where you, if you were gonna, where you were gonna stand. I knew that you would always do your research, try to find the very best solution. And then you were, you had worked to represent the people of Ditten County to the, to the highest and best standard. And I just want to thank you for that. So we'll yield the floor to you.
Thank you so much and thank you so much for all of the kind words. My relationship and friendship with each one of you is very deep and very meaningful. And I will tell you as somebody who's raised kids and now blessed to have grandkids in Ditten County. Ditten County has given our family so much, more I feel like than I've been able to give back. And as a school board trustee, I was able to do a program called the Master Trustee Program, where I was able to go across the state and look at other school districts. And then as a state representative, I was on appropriation, was able to hear from people from all across the state. And I can tell you one of the things that I really, you know, you, you think something's real, but then you're put in positions where you actually get to see the reality of it. And I got to see up hand, up close and personal, how special Ditten County is. And it's unique in the state of Texas because this is a county that have leaders that have strong faith, leaders that have integrity, leaders that love their community, and leaders that are giving back because they want to lead this better than they found it. And you know what? That's unique. That's not every county. That's not most counties here in Texas. But in Ditten County, I think we set the bar for excellence in leadership. And I want to tell you that I am so grateful to have a Commissioners Court and a judge with people, men and women of faith, because I think that really is what sets us apart. And I want to thank you for that. But my service as a state rep was an honor. I absolutely loved every moment of it. And I love being able to serve, help with policy for Ditten County, for our cities, our communities, and our great state. And I look forward to continue serving because Ditten County, as you say, is growing with 90 new people a day. And with them, they're bringing other issues, they're bringing great strengths. They're also bringing things that they need help with. And Ditten County is really uniquely positioned to help people regardless of where they come and where their needs are. And so I'm absolutely here, not going anywhere, looking forward to raising, helping with those grandbabies who loved Ditten County as much as I do. So thank you for your service and thank you for this proclamation. I appreciate you doing that for us. So Godspeed and God bless.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion carries unanimously.
Well, 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 this next item is 41 years in the making.
I'm gonna get my, I'm gonna get my tissues all ready.
I know, it's okay. I know. Let's go to item three B, which is approval of a resolution recognizing Michelle French's retirement in any appropriate action. And Michelle, you know the drill here, you've been, seen it many times. We'll make some, read this, make some comments from the court. Then we'd love to have you introduce any guests you have. And then we'll do a, we'll let you have the last word.
Thank you.
And I like it because there's so much, Michelle's 41-year career here, that they squeezed it in and made it fine print. So we could add some more in here, narrow margins and fine print. And I'm glad because you deserve every bit of it. So this is a resolution honoring Michelle French. Pardon me, let me go ahead and do this. Get some warm coffee. A resolution honoring Michelle French for 41 years of service of Ditten County. That's an applause line right there. The Ditten County Commissioners Court, Ditten County, Texas, during a regular session on the 10th day of December 2024, consider the following resolution. Whereas Michelle French has faithfully served Ditten County for 41 years and will retire on December 31st, 2024. Michelle began her distinguished career as a deputy clerk with the Ditten County Tax Assessor Collector's Office. During her time with the office, Michelle held numerous key positions, including chief deputy under former tax assessor collectors Mary Horn and Steve Mossman, before being elected as Ditten County Tax Assessor Collector in 2012. And whereas Michelle French earned her registered Texas Tax Assessor Collector certification in 1999 and has maintained her professional county collector designation throughout her career, reflecting her dedication to professional development and excellence. Whereas under her leadership, Ditten Town, Ditten County Tax Assessor Collector's Office has grown to collect for 150 jurisdictions, managing the billing and collection of over 600,000 parcels. Additionally, the office has expanded to six branch locations, processing motor vehicle registration and titling services for approximately 600,000 motor vehicles and overseeing over 130,000 title transfers annually. Whereas Michelle served as a member of the Ditten Central Appraisal District Board of Directors, contributing her knowledge and expertise to this vital body. And whereas Michelle's service extended beyond Ditten County to her colleagues across the state of Texas through her active involvement in the Tax Assessor Collectors Association of Texas, where she completed seven years of service on the Board of Directors, including serving as Secretary Treasurer and President in 2018 and 2019. Her exceptional leadership has, was recognized with the prestigious Tax, Texas Association Tax Assessor Collector's President's Award, where she received, which she received twice. Michelle continues to contribute to TACA by serving on several committees. And whereas in addition to professional accomplishment, Michelle is a dedicated member of the Ditten community, actively involved with the Ditten Breakfast Koanos and serving on the Advisory Council for a journey to dream. She's also deeply committed to her family, which includes her husband, two sons, and two wonderful granddaughters with whom she enjoys spending time. And whereas Michelle has been a mentor and leader guiding the Ditten County Tax Office with integrity, professionalism, and dedication. Her impact will be felt for years to come by residents of Ditten County and the many colleagues she has inspired throughout her career. Now therefore be it resolved, the Ditten County Commissioners Court, Ditten County, Texas, does hereby extend our heartfelt appreciation to Michelle French for her more than four decades of outstanding service, leadership, and contributions to Ditten County. We wish her all the best in her well-earned retirement and future endeavors. Done an open court this 10th day of December 2024 upon a motion by the chair, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Who wants to, who wants to speak?
No, ladies first.
Y'all want to go first?
Well, I will go first. Michelle, I don't, didn't realize that we were hiring children 40 years ago to work in the tax office. My gosh, I can't believe 41 years, how young and, and vibrant you must have been. I just can't imagine how things are gonna be without you there. And I'll bet somehow you're kind of wondering about that too, but I know you're working with the newest tax assessor collector coming in, who's very interested in doing as good a job as you have done.
Thank you.
But it's just amazing to think about how many years you've been doing this. Did you ever think about anything other than the tax office during those 41 years?
You know, in the beginning, I will tell you, in the beginning, it was, it was a job. It was, it was a job. But it became a career and then it became a passion. And so it has been something that I've dedicated my entire professional career towards.
Well, and you've, you've done a great job with that. I knew it was, that you were passionate about it. That's why I asked if you ever thought about anything else. But we're glad that you thought a whole lot about the tax office. And I, it's so impressive. I remember when I first kind of became aware of Commissioners Court and what was going on. Under Mary Horn, y'all were talking about doing other taxes, not just the counties. And I thought, well, that's probably a pretty good idea. And now how many are there? 150?
150 taxing entities and assessment districts combined, 150.
That's amazing.
It's crazy.
And I know that's a real service to the taxpayers to just get one bill instead of three or four. So thank you for doing that, along with all the other things that you've done. It's, it's been an honor to know you, Michelle.
Thank you so much, Commissioner.
Well, Michelle.
Well.
You're leaving me.
I know.
I want to thank you for being a wonderful tax assessor. You learned from the best, Mary Horn.
That's right.
And I know serving under Mary, you had certain things to do and you had to do them right. And you learned that. And you've been a mentor to each and every one of us, no matter what the situation is. When I have a problem with a tax question, I call Michelle, I say, call me, I need help. And you always pick up the phone and you call me and you work through it. I had a citizen in Louisville that her tax bill was so messed, messed up because she was elderly. We worked through it. You've mentored to many, many people, the people in your office as well, those that are not in office. And as the judge was talking about, Texas Association of County, how you've worked hard there to make things better. We just appreciate the things that you do. You run your office like you run, run your home, I'm pretty sure. With dedication and love and compassion, but you get the job done. And sometimes you have to say no. Sometimes you have to tell me, no, Bobby, we can't do that. We have to do this.
That's right.
But you know what? I don't worry about it because when you tell me that, I know that you've researched that idea and you've done the best you could to make sure I get the best information. And I appreciate that. I appreciate all you do, your friendship. You've worked tirelessly for this county. 41 years you've given us. I appreciate that.
Thank you so much, Commissioner.
Thank you. And believe it or not, you have made Ditten County a better place. You know, a lot of people, when you first came into the office and Mary was in office, she was, you know, scary sometimes to people because she was so strong. But you, Michelle, you worked it out for people. When Mary wasn't there, you took over and you took care of it because you had been trained by her. You knew what to do, but you did it with compassion and we appreciate that. The family, I appreciate you because you've let Michelle do Ditten County's work for 41 years. Yeah, yes. And you, but you've been behind her every step of the way. And every time she gets ready to do something, upheld her. Being a tax assessor is not an easy job.
It is not. You are correct.
Yes, because when I get the screaming, yelling citizen, I say, I got to get Michelle. And I know Michelle is gonna handle it. Because I don't know anything about it. You are the expert. And I'm glad to pass that off to you because I know when it comes back, you'll have the answer to it. And as I say, we may not always like it, but we know that it's the correct answer. And it's the best answer that we can give when we're dealing with taxes. And I don't understand it. And sometimes I say, I don't like this, I want to do this. But Michelle, definitely tell me, Bobby, this is what we have to do.
You are absolutely correct. That's one of the things that we talk about in the office all the time. What is the most right thing to do?
Yes.
What does the law say?
Yes.
But what is the, and, and within that law, what is the, the most right thing to do? We talk about that all the time.
And how to make that citizen feel like, okay, I don't like her answer, but I know she gave me the best answer that was there. And that's important when we're dealing with citizens, is that we make, let them feel good when they go away from us. They may not like it, but they don't, they're not angry.
Right.
They may not understand it all, but they're not angry. You've done that in the tax office. And so I just want to thank you for all your service. And I know you're gonna be there to provide that expertise to our next tax assessor. And I certainly do appreciate. And I certainly do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have fun with those grandbabies and go and let God continue to bless you.
Indeed. Thank you so much, Commissioner. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Well, Michelle, what a what an awesome career you've had. You you've done such a great job. You know, our first interactions with you actually, other than sending you a check every year. What is was, you know, when I was on council and mayor in Carrollton and and as a customer essentially there, you were phenomenal and it was great.
Thank you.
And and then even more so is coming on as Commissioner. You you have always, as we've said, such a great job of explaining what's happening, keeping us informed, taking that time to do that, which I realize you had plenty of other things to do, but you always took that time to call and to come see us and and fill us in. And I I I was curious about that too, because you know, about what Diane was asking, like, do you did you, when you were a kid, did you want to be a tax collector? I don't think that's one of the top job, but but you're in good company with Apostle Matthew, so.
Yes, indeed.
So you've got good company. But thank you so much for what you've done and I'm glad to call you a friend.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. Same.
Ryan?
Ms. French, um, got obviously a lot of things have been said about you that are all true and and I concur with all of them. You know, one of the things that that has been missed here is you've worked for the county for forty-one years, but you've were elected for twelve of those, which is doesn't mean you automatically get that opportunity, right? You put all those years in to learn and educate yourself on the position that you decided to to run for, to be elected. And obviously you continue getting reelected because nobody wants to do the job. And no, I'm kidding. You know, you did such a wonderful job, the citizen said, hey, obviously this is a person that we need to continue doing. Yeah, I I don't know anybody that that grows up saying that this is what they want to do for a living. And and it was in, to your point, it was an opportunity that you took to get a job originally and it became a career.
Yes.
Which I think says a lot for Denton County too, because you decided not only to work here, but then you decided to stay here for forty-one years. So it says a lot for the way this county operates and how it takes care of its employees. But and also, you know, Commissioner Mitchell said said it many a times, you would always answer the phone. We obviously always deal with complaints or concerns or issues with taxpayers. And we can always turn those over to you and you've you and your staff have done a phenomenal job of taking care of them. Again, not that they always love the answer, but the answer is what it is. It's appropriate answer and we always I can always feel confident in the answer. I don't have to worry about going, well, maybe that's true, maybe it's not. But I know it's a fact and and you've done your part in your research and your folks are very good at what they do. And I know that your employees are going to miss you deeply because there's a lot of years of institutional knowledge that that when when you leave, that, you know, that it's a difficult thing to replace. It's not replaceable without the years of experience as well, because you just can all of a sudden say something and you just know it, right? Because you did it and you did all those jobs. There's something to be said about that too. But nevertheless, I want to thank you and and your family for allowing and choosing to be a Denton County employee and an elected official for forty-one years. And congratulations.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Thank you so much.
Well, you know, Michelle, this is a bittersweet day.
It is.
Personally, I just count you a friend and a colleague. It's been great to work with you beside you all these years. You know, I was, I think it's important to, as we talk about forty-one years, you know, working for Denton County. I looked it up. Michelle is our most tenured employee as of this moment. Let's give her a big hand for that. It's tenured. But the other side of tenure, the other other side of that coin is innovation. And sometimes people who've been around a long time are not innovators. And I tell you, I was talking, we were at a Chamber of Commerce thing last night. We were talking about AI. And Ginger was sitting there and I said, we're talking about AI and how it can be used in workplaces. And I said, well, you know, Michelle had us doing AI, answering the phone at the tax office. Ginger said, really? I said, yes, and I wasn't crazy about it. You recall?
I do recall.
I didn't like it one bit. But and I think some colleagues didn't like it either. But you know what? In perfect Michelle fashion, she said, okay, let's get with y'all. And so she did. And she got with us and we figured out a great way to do it. And it was about not, and I was worried that it was going to remove a level of customer service. And I think it actually extended a level of customer service. And so I want to I want to say thank you for being innovative up to the end here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle, because even though you have a long tenure here, or say you're you've still been working to innovate that office. Michelle and I have a special bond that nobody else has. We talk about it, is that we both worked with Mary.
Yes.
Considered Mary a friend and mentor. We both succeeded Mary Horn. Michelle and I both succeeded Mary Horn and have and and oftentimes, we would we'd talk over the years. We we our little thing was we get sometimes we get a tough tough question or fork in the road, you say, what what would Mary do? Right? And sometimes we would do what we thought Mary would do. Sometimes we would not do what we thought Mary would do.
That's exactly right.
Which is just as important as doing what Mary would do. But we loved her and we learned from the best, didn't we?
Yes, we did.
We lost Mary. Michelle had a had many conversations about that, how blessed we were. And I think that people in the future will say they were blessed by working for Michelle French.
Goodness, thank you.
Just as you say, you're blessed by working with Mary.
Well, thank you. That is.
And I think that is a huge, huge compliment. I think one of the best qualities Michelle has, and you got to hear me out on this one, say it, is Michelle is a worrier. She's a worrier. And I mean that as a compliment, the opposite of worry is not caring.
Right.
Michelle worries. And so when we be closing the county, you know, but we get a ice would come on the horizon or the forecast. Michelle be on the phone with me, Andy, what do you think you're going to do? Going to close the county or not? I got to let my staff know. They got to make arrangements for the kids and school and all that stuff. Worry. About the staff, worried about the operations. We got to get the taxes in. How do we got to maintain the public access to the system? That's one reason we do so much virtual so people could could still pay. And so it was another innovation. So so I I mean that in the most positive of terms, that you did care and have concern and worry about the taxpayer and what's doing what's right and trying to find that happy medium. It's a customer service job.
Yeah.
Customers are the entities, the hundred and fifty entities that you work for and and all the all the taxpayers, the six hundred thousand accounts. So I wish you all the best. I wish you all the best, your dear friend. I love you to death. And and hopefully we see more of you, but at the county picnic and other fun places, you know. So anyway, Michelle, you just you definitely left it better than you found it. And I want to I want to thank you for these forty-one years of Denton County. So let's we'll give you the floor.
Forty-one years. That's that's a long time. The only thing that happened before I started working for Denton County was I had married my wonderful husband. And everything else that has happened important in my life has happened while I worked at Denton County. When kids were born, now they're grown. Now I've got grandkids. Everything that was important that happened in the country happened while I was working at my little Denton County Tax Office. And so it's it has been truly an honor. I I wrote down my notes because I did not want to forget anything. And first of all, I just want to thank God for the opportunities that has been given to me and that he saw fit to to put me in in this place. It's great mercy, a wonderful grace, just amazing, and the opportunities that I've had throughout these years. It's been it's been quite a ride. And at sometimes it was a ride that I really wanted to get off of. But most of the time, it's been a wonderful ride, a wonderful adventure. I want to thank my husband, who has absolutely supported me, my my sweet husband, my family, who has just been here right beside me, right alongside of me. One of my kids was saying not too long ago, and he said, you know, it's it's kind of hard to think of you not being at the tax office, ma'am, because my entire life, all I've ever heard is about the tax office. And, you know, so many times I go home at night and my husband and I, Bob and I will be talking and he will just, he knows I have to just talk it out. I have to just, I had to just go, this is what happened today. And he just sits there and listens to me. And when I see his eyes glaze over, then that's when I know, okay, it's it's time for me to stop talking. But he's always so patient with me and so supportive. And I just appreciate him so much. My team, they're not my staff, they are my team. So many of my team have become dear friends. And I'm going to, I'm trying really hard not to do this, but I don't know if I can or not.
It's all right.
They have become dear friends. They, someone said, someone very wise said, many, many, many years ago, years ago. I don't even know who to describe the the quote to, but it is always surround yourself with people who are smarter than you. And that was one of the things that I always wanted to do is I don't know everything. I'm one of those big picture people that I know what it looks like when we get there, but I don't know how to get there. And so the people around me are just phenomenal. They are great public servants. They are excellent at their job. They are the best there is. I will put them up against anybody out there. They've become dear friends to me. Commissioners Court, thank you all so much for your support through the years. The AI, yes, I remember that. That that was a hard one to convince y'all. But it was so important. And think about the service that we are now able to give our constituents using that. You know, just all the technology, that was one of the hallmarks of or one of one of my goals when I first took office, is we needed to move into the the technology age of how to provide public service. And that's something that I've always wanted to do, is to make sure that we utilize every tool, everything that is at our at our hands, that we can afford, that we can can manage, use every bit of technology to our advantage, leverage it for customer service. And, you know, I I still think about the things that are still out there that we could possibly do, but now it's not mine to decide. That'll be the next, that'll be for Dawn whenever she comes in. You know, it is an honor and a privilege to be able to serve Denton County. It's an honor and a privilege to be able to serve my team, to be able to serve you, to be able to serve our constituents. I mean, my goodness, something I tell our brand new employees when they first come in, when we first have, when they come in, I have a sit down with them. And I don't get to talk to my to to many of my employees every day. But one thing I always want to do is when they first come in, I always want to sit down, get to know them a little bit better, but also talk about the things that are important and and the expectations. And something that that y'all said was, you know, that I do worry and that I do want to make sure that we're providing the best public service we possibly can. And there's two things that I always make sure I tell our new team members, which is public service is noble, noble work. There is no better, in my opinion, you know, we there's service in every industry. But in our office, in our department, we serve the the vast majority of the population in Denton County, whether it be their motor vehicles, their property taxes, permits, whatever the case may be. We serve the population of Denton County and it is noble work. And, you know, the other thing that I tell them is that, you know, we sell public service. We don't sell bread and butter and milk. Our our what we retail in is public service. And that's something that we want to make sure that we provide the best, the best product that we possibly can. We always talk about how to provide a positive inflection rather than a negative inflection. You know, something we talk about a lot is how to get when we have to say no, how do we say that in a positive manner? And and how do we make this as as amenable a situation as possible, knowing that unfortunately, a lot of times we do have to say no. And so we just talk about that a lot within our office. And I've just, I've got such a great team. And I'm going to, it's it's so bittersweet and I'm super, super excited, but it's, I'm sad to leave the people. I'm sad to leave the processes. There's some things I'm not going to be sad about leaving. Truth in taxation, I will not miss that one single bit. January thirty-first, will not miss it at all. But you know what? The 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 my colleagues, my friends, the process, it is an amazing process. It is amazing thing to be able to be in a position to serve your county and to serve people. There is great worth in service. And so I'm very grateful, I'm very thankful, and I just appreciate so much the the time that y'all have afforded me, that my team has afforded me. They are just, they are top notch. You've got a great, great team in the tax office in Denton County. So thank you all very much.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries here. It's like, you got through it. All right, we're going to do our Master Naturalists. You're you're next. Let's go to item two, three G. Catherine, you want you and your crew want to come forward? I'm sorry, we're just now getting to y'all, but we've had our thank yous to do this morning with our, and now it's your turn. So thank y'all for, thank y'all for waiting for us. It was a very special morning of the year.
We have been in very highly esteemed company today.
Yes, you have. Well, I and I include you in that as well. So this is a approval of a proclamation recognizing the Texas Master Naturalist's twenty-five years of service. I'll go ahead and read this. Catherine, I'd love for you to talk about the the great work that y'all do. This is a court proclamation recognizing Texas Master Naturalist for twenty-five years of service. Whereas the Texas Master Naturalist Elm Fork Chapter is celebrating twenty-five years of service to the people of Denton, Cook and Wise Counties. And whereas the Texas Master Naturalist Program's mission is to develop a core of well-informed volunteers to provide education, outreach and service dedicated to the beneficial management of natural resources and natural areas within their communities for the state of Texas. And whereas volunteer projects have a broad range of activities and may include construction and maintenance of interpretive trails, prairie and plant restoration, exotic species control, fish, wildlife and plant inventory, songbird nest box monitoring, natural resource youth camps, natural resource interpretation at nature and visitor centers, creating and maintaining. creating and maintaining nature scape demonstration areas. And whereas members since nineteen ninety nine have contributed over three hundred and seventy seven thousand volunteer hours working on more than fifty projects, including public presentation and hands-on work with children through D I S D School Days projects and the Clear Creek Natural Heritage Center, which hosts, hosted over four thousand eight hundred and sixty two visitors during the second and fourth grade student field trips. And whereas the Texas Master Naturalist Elm Fork Chapter has had a lasting impact on the preservation of natural resources within the county of Denton, which also increases ecotourism by conserving green space and restoring degraded and neglected areas. Now therefore, it be resolved that the Denton County Commissioners Court does hereby recognize the Texas Master Naturalist Elm Fork Chapter's twenty fifth anniversary and urge all citizens to support their many programs and projects and congratulate their community involvement done in open court this the tenth day of December twenty twenty four upon a motion by the chair, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Catherine, I, I love the great work that y'all do. And I, I remember, was it in the summer when y'all had your expo over here with all your, all the booths? We had elections, and you walk through and see all these different tables and exhibits of projects and educational opportunities that they are promoting and advancing, and it's so exciting. And the guy that raises all the little turtles, the baby turtles, and hatches them out. I've never seen so many turtles. And and that were there, and they raise them up to maturity and release them. It's just a great, it's a great bat houses and owl houses and all the different, uh, uh, projects that y'all work on. Really is great. And it's all about encouraging kids and youth and the public and about doing their part. Everyone could do a part. And I encourage everyone to do their part for conservation. And go ahead, and I'll hand it to you. Thank you for being here. And again, thank you for your patience.
Well, thank you so much. Hugh Franks is our resident turtle man.
Okay. Is he here?
He is not with us today.
Turtle man is not in the house.
Turtle man is not, he's probably out volunteering, doing something really good somewhere in the county. But it is such a pleasure and a privilege to be here today and to be with some of our member leaders who serve so well. And, um, I always love this day, um, this annual event that we have when we present our representative check of the value of our service to the county. And that's always fun to count our hours and figure out how much we're worth. But we always think that maybe you can't put a price on us, that we're priceless for all the volunteer work that we offer the county. So that's what we, that's what we like to say. But it is a, a privilege and a pleasure in in this particular place, because I know Judge Jeege and Commissioner Williams and Commissioner Falconer and Commissioner Mitchell and Commissioner Edmondson, y'all are all great stewards of this ecosystem that we have, which is really special because we have the prairies, and then we have that nice little strip of the cross timbers running through the prairies, which is a very special ecosystem. And it's just an honor and a privilege to serve the county. We are actually having our twenty fifth celebration in the twenty twenty room on Thursday. So we've been working with, uh, Teresa and Deborah, they've been, I mean, Teresa and Donna, they've been very helpful, um, in helping us get the room ready for our celebration. Michelle's retirement is the day before our celebration. So the room's being put to really good use. But, um, if I may, I'd just like to, um, have our folks join us and, um, and we just thank you for your support.
Thanks for all the great work that you, all right, you have a, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. So happy birthday for twenty five. And I will say, after we take this picture, we are going to have a five-minute recess.
Okay, we reconvene from our temporary recess. Let's go to item fourteen A. Fourteen A is approval resolution by the Commissioners Court of Denton County, Texas, dissolving the Green Meadows Public Improvement District created in March of twenty twenty four and located in Denton County Commissioner Precinct One in accordance with chapter three seventy-two of the Texas Local Government Code.
Move to approve.
With a motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item fourteen B. Approval of Green Meadows Public Improvement District Financing Agreement between PH Land Holdings LLC, a Texas Limited Liability Company, Denton County, Texas, and Smiley Road Water Control and Improvement District Number Two, located in Commissioner Precinct One.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen C. Approval of Green Meadows Public Improvement District Financing Agreement between Wilbo Finance, Green Meadows LLC, a Texas Limited Liability Company, Denton County, Texas, and Smiley Road Water Control Improvement District Number Two, located in Denton County Commissioner Precinct One.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item fourteen D. Approval of Green Meadows Public Improvement District Financing Agreement among OPP Green Meadows LP, a Texas Limited Partnership, North Salina LP, a Texas Limited Partnership, GM Salina LP, a Texas Limited Partnership, and South GM LP, a Texas Limited Partnership, Denton County, Texas, and Smiley Road Control, Water Control and Improvement District Number Two, located in Commissioner Precinct One.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for being here today.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Next, let's go to item two, which is our consent agenda. There is no order making appointments under two A. There may be no order making appointments. We do have an item two B, so do we have a motion to approve item two B?
So, yes.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Williams, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next go, next to item five A. Approval of the Bureau report payments from CSCD Community Corrections, TAIP, Sheriff's Training, Sheriff's Forfeiture, VIT interest and DA Forfeiture Friends are presented for recording purposes only. Mr. May.
Thank you, Judge. I have no changes today. Recommend approval as presented.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, let's go to item six A. Approval of the renewal of the Cisco Smart Net Support Services for Presidio Holding Incorporated and Approved Reseller of Cisco Services Systems Incorporated in an amount of two hundred seventy-five thousand three hundred and two dollars and ninety-two cents through the Texas Interlocal Purchasing System Cooperative Contract Number two-two-zero-one-zero-five.
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six B. Approval of the renewal of the Cisco Duo Advantage Edition from Presidio Network Solutions Group LLC in an amount of one hundred and twenty-eight thousand six hundred and four dollars through the Texas Interlocal Purchasing System to TIPS Cooperative Contract two-two-zero-one-zero-five. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six C. Approval of the renewal of the Cisco Flex Enterprise Agreement Subscription from Presidio Network Solutions Incorporated LLC and Approved Reseller of Cisco Systems Incorporated in an amount of one hundred thousand nine hundred and fifty-one dollars and twenty cents through the Texas Interlocal Purchasing System TIPS Cooperative Contract two-two-zero-one-zero-five. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six D. Approval of renewal of Veracode S A S T, D A S T N C S, C A Software and Support from S H I Government Solutions in an amount of one hundred and thirty-seven thousand two hundred and ninety-eight dollars and thirty-four cents through Omnia Partners Cooperative Contract two-zero-one-eight-zero-one-one-zero-two.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six E. Approval of renewal of the Tech Share Juvenile Maintenance and Operations from Tech Share Local Government Corporation in an amount of one hundred and seventeen thousand five hundred and nineteen dollars through Tech Share Juvenile Resource Sharing Addendum and any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion, pardon me, carries unanimously. Next is six F. Approval of renewal of the Adobe Acrobat Enterprise Licensing Subscription from S H I Government Solutions in an amount of eighty-eight thousand eighty-two dollars and eighty-seven cents through Omnia Cooperative Contract two-zero-one-eight-zero-one-one-zero-two.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Williams, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six G. Approval of the purchase of workers' compensation insurance coverage from the Texas Association of Counties Risk Management Board for twenty twenty-five. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, Chair will second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six H. Approval of purchase of eight twenty-twenty-four Braun Chief XL Ford F five fifty Type One ambulances from Sidens Martin Emergency Group LLC through the H G A C Cooperative Contract AM one zero-two-three in an amount of three million three hundred and sixty-five thousand four hundred and eighty dollars to be purchased with the American Rescue Plan ARPA funds.
Move to approve.
Second back of the chair, so motion by Commissioner Williams, Chair will second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I want to thank the staff for all their exceptional care of that item. Next, let's go to six I. Approval of purchase of computers, laptops, notebooks, and related computer equipment for the county's fiscal year twenty twenty-five hardware refresh project from Dell Marketing LP in an amount of nine hundred and fourteen thousand nine hundred and sixty-five dollars through the Texas Department of Information Resources DIR Cooperative Contract DIR T S O three-seven-six-three.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Williams, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six J. Approval of purchase of eight self-contained breathing apparatus, SCBA, and accessories for municipal emergency services through the Sourcewell Cooperative Contract zero-one-zero-four-two for MES in an amount of ninety-three thousand nine hundred and eighty-four dollars to be purchased by the American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, let's go to six K. Approval of purchase of equipment and labor to replace the tower lighting at the old emergency services building from Johnston Technical Services Incorporated, JTS, through the Department of Information Resources Cooperative Contract DIR CPA, CPO four-seven-nine-two in an amount of thirty-seven thousand three hundred and thirty-two dollars and sixty-five cents to be purchased through the American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds and any appropriate action. Motion by the Commissioner Mitchell, Chair will second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item six L is the approval of purchase of four APX eight-five-zero-zero-all-band dual-head mobile radios for Motorola Solutions Incorporated through the Houston Galveston Area Council H G A C Cooperative Contract RA zero-five-two-one in an amount of thirty-nine thousand six hundred and seventy dollars and twenty cents to be purchased with the American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six M. Approval of purchase of twelve APX Next X E portable radios from the Motorola Solutions Incorporated through the Houston Galveston Area Council Cooperative Contract RA zero-five-two-one in an amount of one hundred and thirty-two thousand and twelve dollars and thirty-six cents to be purchased by the, with American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Williams, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six N. Approval of award of RFP two-four-two-eight-three-three painting, staining, and transparent finishes services to GFC contracting and any appropriate action.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven A. This will be a standing item per our budget control policy. Seven A is approval of miscellaneous equipment and software services presented for recording purposes only. Next, let's go to item eight A. This report from Human Resources regarding hiring actions of elected officials, this too, is presented for recording purposes only. Mr. Hernandez.
Judge, Commissioners, good morning. We have one new hire in adult probation, two new hires in juvenile probation, one promotion in juvenile probation, six new hires in the sheriff's office. Three of those are detention officers. That's it for this week.
Perfect. Thank you, Gustavo. Next is item eight B. Approval of extension of the Temporary Program Manager Slot zero-zero-five C O for the County Criminal Court Number Three Veterans Court.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item ten A. Approval of the Cash Mills Phase Two Final Plaid, this is lots twelve through twenty-nine, Block A, twenty-one point four-two-eight acres, located in Commissioner Precinct One.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is thirteen A. Approval of the subcontract number S R A eight-one-one between Denton County and the University of North Texas for Denton County Drug Treatment Court Outcomes Evaluation and Appropriate Action. This is the two-hundred-eleventh District Court Drug Treatment Court and the four-hundred-and-sixty-second District Court Drug Treatment Court. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is thirteen B. Approval of the recognition and designation of the Denton County Mental Health Treatment Court in County Criminal Court Number Five and any appropriate action. The Chair move for approval.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Williams, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is, pardon me, fourteen E. Approval of Change Order Number Seven and the Usage of American Rescue Plan Act ARPA Funding for the Statement of Work with Collaborative Solutions LLC for the Enterprise Resource Planning, the ERP Software and Implementation Services in an amount of three hundred and thirteen thousand four hundred and seventy-three dollars to come from auto line item five-four-six-six-six-one-one-zero-eight-six ERP Implementation Project ARPA as recommended by Scott Arden, Director of Purchasing, Kevin Carr, Director of Technology Services, Jeff May, County Artist, our very own Cindy Brown, County Treasurer, Alejandra Moreno, Budget Officer, and Gustavo Hernandez, Director of Human Resources.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. We have guests in attendance who don't want to speak to the item. Are we good? All right, hearing no comments. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for being here. Next, let's go to item fourteen F. Approval of Amendment Number Three to the License and Support Application Software Contract between Denton County and Open Gov Incorporated for the County Financial System for an additional one-year term beginning January first twenty twenty-five and ending December thirty-first twenty twenty-five at an annual fee of sixty-one thousand twenty-two dollars and eighty-five cents funded to come from Technology Software Services Auto Line Item Number zero-one-six-six-six-one-one-zero-four-five exemption from bidding for services with Open Gov Incorporated for the requirement established by Texas Local Government Code Section two-sixty-two point zero-two-three.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, Chair will second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next is fourteen G. Approval of the Governmental four-fifty-seven-B Plan Adoption Agreement with Nationwide Retirement Solutions. The adoption agreement approves updates including a regular Roth IRA option and an in-plan Roth conversion option to Nationwide's current deferred compensation plan document as requested by the Director of Human Resources.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, the Chair will second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen H. Approval of application of Nationwide Indexed Principal Protection NW IPP Group Flexible Purchase Payment Deferred Fixed Index Annuity Contracting Nonparticipating Underwritten by Nationwide Life Insurance Company, which application must be executed submitted by Denton County if Denton County desires to add NW IPP option to the Denton County four-seventy-five-B Deferred Compensation Plan Vendor Nationwide Retirement Solutions as requested by the Director of Human Resources and any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen I. Approval of the Sheriff Bond for Tracy Murphy in an amount of thirty thousand dollars with a premium of five hundred and thirty-three dollars to come from general funds, county official bonds, auto line item zero-one-five-five-one-zero-one-zero-four-zero.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, the Chair will second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, we're going to go back and to a resolution. Item three C is approval of resolution recognizing Debbie Wood's retirement and any appropriate action. Ms. Wood is not with us today, but I would like to go ahead and read this resolution. This is resolution honoring Debbie Wood for sixteen years of service at Denton County, the Denton County Commissioners Court, Denton County, Texas, during a regular session on the tenth day of December twenty twenty-four, considering following resolution. Whereas Debbie Wood, voter registration clerk, has been a loyal employee with the Denton County Elections Administration since April the ninth two thousand and eight and will retire on December the sixteenth twenty twenty-four after sixteen years of service. Whereas Debbie has served the citizens of Denton County by being a driving force in maintaining clean voter registration rolls, which is a first component in ensuring election integrity. And whereas Debbie has been the main person responsible for removing deceased voters and convicting felons from the voter registration rolls. And whereas Debbie has always been willing to assist in this capacity, she was needed to ensure that elections ran smoothly and all tasks were completed in a timely manner. And whereas Debbie plans to spend her retirement flower gardening, working on the stack of recipes she's been saving, and spending as much time as possible spoiling her new grand shop. That sounds like a pretty good gig. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the Denton County Commissioners Court, Denton County, Texas, does hereby extend to Debbie Wood our sincere and grateful appreciation for her dedicated service at Denton County. We congratulate Debbie on her well-end retirement and extend our best wishes to her for continued success, happiness, and good health in the years to come. Then, in open court this the tenth day of December twenty twenty-four, upon a motion by the Chair, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Well, Debbie, although you're not with us in person, I do hope that you're watching this, and I want to thank you. I love this part of the resolution where you were the main person responsible for removing deceased voters from the voter rolls. And I wish every county had a Debbie Wood. You know, so I think it's a great, great job. Thank you for investing your time and career here at Denton County. He's seen us through another presidential election, so thank you for, for waiting to retire until after that is behind us. We have a motion and a second. Any other comments? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Let's go. Okay. That was a lot to read. Okay, let's go to, let's go to item sixteen A. Approval of the, to procure consulting services for the Enterprise Resource Planning ERP Implementation Project for American Rescue Plan Act ARPA Funds through the Karasoff Technology Corporation. Services include a workday project manager in an amount of ninety thousand five hundred and fifty dollars in a workday test lead, in an amount of one hundred and seven thousand four hundred dollars, totaling one hundred and ninety-seven thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars for the Texas DIR Cooperative Contract DIR CPO five-one-seven-five. I have a question. So, well, I'll move for approval. Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Mitchell. So, these two projects, this workday project manager and workday test lead, who can speak to that? So, Scott, these are part of that, that contract to have these two individuals?
Yes.
For, through the conversion?
Yes. So.
And what, what is the length of that? Is that a one-year?
Nick can explain a little bit more about it.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, sir. Thank you for hanging with us.
Hi, yes, thank you. My name is Nick Hawley. I'm the Application Support Manager at Technology Services. I'm also the project manager for the ERP project. What was your question?
You have a big job there, so thank you so much. Thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
It looks like, am I correct, this contract also includes these two individuals? The project manager and workday test lead?
Yes, sir. It's a project manager and also a test lead. There's two individuals.
Okay, and is this a one-year contract with them, or how does that work?
About, it ends, end of July. That's the end of our term.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-twenty-five, yeah.
Okay. Okay, perfect. All right. Go ahead.
Here, or did we just thought that we needed?
Did we just thought that we needed those? Because I was wondering why they weren't in the original.
That, that's a great question. Something that we've kind of run into is with workday. We're kind of, like, we know public sector, and workday is, like, kind of fairly new to the public sector. But these consultants, they've gone through implementations in the public sector for workday, so they can help us find and identify any gaps that maybe we're just not, we're not catching. And so, we've kind of determined after we started our end-to-end testing, which is basically testing all of our configurations, that these, these additional resources could help us find some of those gaps to ensure that we're not missing anything before we launch, especially with the extension.
Are we anticipating adding any more people?
No, not at this time. I, I would be surprised.
Okay, thank you.
I thought we did add some individuals. We already added two.
We already added those. I mean, after this.
That's why I'm asking. Say again.
Contractors.
These are, these are, this is contract work. These will not be county employees. We did add three county employees at the start of this project.
Yeah, which I'm still not crazy about.
None of us are.
More money and more employees, and it's supposed to be simpler.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for your explanation, sir.
Thank you so much.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thanks for being here. Thank you. That is a, for some people, it's a once-in-a-career conversion, so I appreciate all the team, everyone that's in this room and not in this room working on that. The officials, the department heads, the frontline staff, everyone that's working on that. Thank y'all for the exceptional work that you are conducting. Okay, let's go to item seventeen. Committee updates. Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Judge. I have one thing today from, from your old high school that you graduated from and this is the school my son goes to and, which is Liberty Christian. They had two, two things recently. They won state in. They won state in football for the second year, so congratulations to Coach Whitten and his wonderful coaching staff and, and the young men that made it possible. And then yesterday, the cheerleading team won state again for the eleventh straight year. I'm assuming that's got to be some kind of record. I don't know what to do, but eleven years in a row is pretty impressive. So, I wanted to say congratulations to them. That's all I've got.
Perfect. Commissioner Falconer.
Thank you, Judge. I'll just hit the holiday events that are going on in Precinct Two. So, Carrollton's got Christmas at the Perry on the twelfth from five thirty to eight. That's at the Perry Museum. Crossroads has their Holiday Market and Winter Fest on the fourteenth from nine to two. That's at FM four two, forty-two, forty-two and Fishtrap. And then Frisco has Walnut's Wassel Walk, and that's on the twelfth from six thirty to eight thirty. That's at the Frisco Heritage Museum. And then Little Elm's got Little Elm Terms Frozen. That's fourteenth from five to nine. That's going to be where we have lots of Little Elms turning frozen with characters coming to life. And Santa will be there, and there'll be ice skating. And then they have a Holiday Bazaar, Bazaar on the fifteenth from noon to five. That's at the Lakefront. And then finally, the Colony has their Christmas Spectacular the seventh through January fifth and five thirty to ten thirty at the Central Fire Station. And that's all I have.
Okay, the third annual Lake City Senior Citizen Holiday Luncheon is going to be in current on December the twelfth at eleven AM to one PM at Bentley Station. In Flower Mound, seniors in action Christmas concert dinner is also at, on the twelfth at five thirty. Breakfast with Sandy, Santa, Sandy, December the fourteenth, eight AM to nine AM and nine thirty AM to ten thirty AM at Jerome, the kek multipurpose room. Enjoy pancake breakfast with Santa, and you can get your picture taken. On December the fourteenth, I'm still in Flower Mound, Frozen River Run, nine AM to ten thirty, also at the kek. You can take a plunge in the frigid water of the outdoor pool, if you'd like. Seniors in motion noon years, noon years, it's supposed to be New Year's Eve, I'm sure. December the thirty-first at eleven AM at the senior center. Holland Village has Christmas at the ranch, Doubletree Ranch, on December the fourteenth at ten AM to two PM. Also, Santa routs December the fifteenth through the twenty-six PM to the eight thirty PM. The Santa will be riding on the fire engine and through the neighborhood, and they're also going to be doing that in Louisville. They started last night. Acoustic jam at the Thrive, at Thrive on December the twelfth, twelve PM to three PM. Also, on December the thirteenth, acoustic jam at the Louisville Grand Theater. Movie screening of Christmas Carol, December the twelfth, six PM to seven thirty at the Louisville, Louisville Library. Community Conservations, December the twelfth, six thirty to eight thirty, Thrive Recreation Center. And Christmas at the Cabin, December the fourteenth, ten AM to three PM at Lator. Please govern yourself accordingly to all these wonderful, wonderful activities. Something for everyone. I'm sorry, I can't talk with my teeth. It's still bothering me.
This is all good. Well, I'm so sorry that the rain caused so many of our events to be rained out over the weekend, but I know they're going to be rescheduling a lot of those. I do want to just say one big Denton County shout-out to the, to the town of Flower Mound for being named the two thousand and twenty-four Scenic City of the Year by Scenic Texas. And they've named Flower Mound that Scenic City of the Year because their commitment to preserving natural beauty while enhancing residents' quality of life. So, shout-out to town of Flower Mound. Let's go to item, we have two items for executive session. Item fifteen A, Texas Government Code five five one zero seven two. Deliberation regarding real property, closing to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property of deliberation in open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the governmental body in negotiations with a third person. And fifteen B, closes, Texas Government Code five five one zero seven one one A. Consultation with attorney, closing when the governmental body seeks the advice of its attorney about pending litigation in MDL number two zero one eight six three five eight seven in regards to Texas opioid litigation, which is currently pending in one hundred and fifty-second District Court of Harris County, Texas. And it is eleven thirty-seven. We're executive session.